Hey, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, April 6, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to board members. To my left, we have Jerry Grayville, myself, Michael LaRue, to my right, Phil Roy, and then Cameron Plattick. We have Irish Griffin for the Code Enforcement Officer, and Hannah Bonine from SMPDC via Zoom. All right. First thing will be the public hearing. There's nothing written on here, but the last one was still open. Is that correct?
I believe we kept it open.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we'll keep that open if anyone wants to speak about that.
Is this a public comment?
Public hearing. Yep. Hi. Just state your name and address.
Karen Mullane, 47, Alley Pond Road. Hi. Still following the Woodland Pond subdivision proposal. Is this a time that I can ask the board questions?
You can ask questions. We just want to answer them so later.
Okay. I think the biggest question that I have is has a formal environmental review been requested to have Inland Fisheries and the Department of Environmental Protection come out, review the area due to the documented Blanding's turtle nesting site, not just a turtle, but an actual nest site. There are two Blanding turtle adults that I've documented. There's up to six hatchlings that I've captured on photo. So without a full review, we don't know how many endangered species there are. When I actually spoke with Derek Yorke several months ago, he expressed interest in coming out and doing studies, tagging some of the turtles and get some data on these. They are highly endangered. So I can't express enough how much, how important it is to have this review done. I've been in touch with Wendy Mahaney from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. She, from a federal point of view, this turtle is up for, is currently being reviewed for federal protections. Mary Beth Richardson with the Department of Environmental Protection, and she's forwarded and included other people on the email as well, just to, hey, this exists, looking for some protections. I'm in touch with Colin Greenen, who was a senior project manager with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, who also asked for information about the development proposal and whatnot. I've spoken with Derek Yorke, Alex Fish, and Scott Lindsay from Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. I've reached out to Nature Conservancy, the Bureau of Resource Management at Inland Fisheries, Biological Monitoring Unit at the Maine DEP, Natural Resources Conservation Services with the USDA, Land for Maine's Future Program, Mount Agamemnonicus to the Sea, Beginning with Habitat, Center for Wildlife. I'm even in contact right now with David Domeno from the Senate Majority Office, who has looped in Jared Gray, who is the legislative aide to Senator Rafferty. I'm sounding the alarm. These animals are dying. Their numbers are decreasing. In 1987, they were listed as threatened. 10 years later, they were listed in Maine as endangered. Their numbers are not getting better. Without a full review, we don't know what we have here, and it is special, and it warrants protection. So David Domeno from the Senate Majority Office was in touch with Inland Fisheries. He's also reached out to the DEP, but I, he hasn't heard back from them. And Inland Fisheries states that they have not received a formal request for a review by a regulatory agency. We would provide additional review and recommendations if formally requested by the Town of Burwick or the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. So my question is, will it be requested by the town? And if yes, then we're on the right path. And if the answer is no, it just will direct me where to look and who else to contact. Like I said, we don't know what we have out there, and it's pretty amazing. And there's a talk of a 250-foot buffer around the area for, like, the wetlands and stuff where the turtles are known to exist. And I'm wondering, I don't know if the planning board would do this, if that buffer, when I built my house, I had to stay 250 feet away from a stream that was on the land use map. I think this pond should be on the land use map as well. It warrants the protection and the buffer, not just $250, $250, 250 feet in one specified area, but around the whole pond's edge because this pond is the home to these endangered species. So that's where I'm at. Can you provide any answers?
Later on in old business, we'll.
Okay. Do you have any questions for me? All right. Spring is coming up. Turtle mating season's happening. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Hilliard, 11 Alley Pond Road. I also just want just some further clarification from the meeting from last time, and just to reiterate everything that Karen has stated in regards to the endangered species that are located in the Alley Pond Road, Johnny Lane area. I walk that road frequently, and I have noticed as of recently, just because of the springtime and the runoff and everything, that some of the area that appears to be marked as plots right now looks like it's most definitely wetlands. There are streams running through there, and that is concerning to just develop that area, change the whole landscape, and how it's going to affect the species that are already in that area. I think we, like Karen said, I think we do owe it to them and as a town to make our mark and show that, you know, we do care as a town and as a state as a whole about our environment and what's going on. So I think we should, I know I did ask about it last time about the form, if anybody's filled that form out to request that formal review of that area, because I do believe that it is really important, and it's, you know, our duty to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Rick Raines, and I live at 18 Carolyn Drive in Burwick, and I am the fiance of Karen Mullane and the builder of the new construction house that she's going to live in, hopefully let me live there too.
Is this like on your best behavior?
I'm certainly trying. So I guess in that regard, the first thing I want to say is that I support Karen and all of her efforts completely, and the amount of work that she's put in here has been a lot. Now, I am a carpenter by trade. I have been for 25 years, and so I understand both that development is inevitable, it also employs me. So I'm not here in the sense to say, stop the development. I am here to support the neighbors and my fiance to make sure that all avenues are followed, to make sure that the rules in place are indeed followed, and that all due diligence is given to the area and the animals and the neighbors to make sure that this developer can abide by the rules and suggestions from the parties that have the power to make them, i.e. Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Department of Environmental Protection, and you guys. And if so, then the development should go in if the modifications are met. My understanding through Karen is that there was a meeting between IFNW and Altus, and that Altus agreed to do some modifications. We don't know what they are yet, so it's hard to speak on what they've come to in agreement so far. But this application for a further review would endeavor Inland Fisheries to look closer into the area, put boots on the ground, and see what's what. I know that in the beginning of this process, I heard that there may be a third-party follow-up, and I'm not sure if that was to the soil scientists or engineers' findings, but I don't know exactly how it works, but the transparency would be important to me, that like if Altus hires the soil scientist and gets a report from them, does anybody, is anybody able to verify that, that it's done appropriately? Not saying that there wasn't anything inappropriate at all, probably not, but you never know when somebody hires their own person for their own benefit, like a realtor hiring a house contractor. So having said that, I hope we cross our Ts and dot our Is and move forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So no, no one else has yet to comment. Should we leave it open one more time?
I would.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we'll leave this open. Next is public comment for non-agenda items. If you could just state your name and address.
My name is Pat Belver. I live at Six Country Lane. I am here to ask the board what has been done about making performance standards for gas stations and perhaps other omissions to the land use.
I'm going to be having a meeting with James to talk further about this. Other than that, I don't know of anything that has been said.
I can speak to that when we answer the questions in the old business.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure I can stay.
Well, this isn't in the public hearing, so this is just public comment.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to answer.
So basically, I've been working on drafting some performance standards, so they're not at any point ready for the board yet, because I'm kind of wearing a lot of hats and juggling a lot of balls right now. But I've been working on for gas station and convenience stores and solar, and I've got one more that came to mind that escapes me at the moment, and I don't know if I have it in my trustee and resti notebook, but I've been working on a few of them, some rough drafts to present to the board.
Okay, because I know they were expecting the application by the end of this month, and hopefully something was going to be in place so that, you know, we had something to say to the people.
I don't know. We don't have any timeline that we're expecting anything for any gas station or solar projects.
Coming in.
Yeah, we don't have any timeline for anything because we haven't received anything. But if they were to apply now, honestly, I don't know that we're going to have time, as was discussed before, to get any other land use changes in, but we do have everything we need in our current performance standards and requirements that we can place on them through the planning board to make everything work out. So.
And Ms. Belver, if I can shut some light too, I share the same concerns you have with regard to that project and its location. I can't say much more than that, but the thought-provoking, forward-leaning questions that I have asked related to that have brought me to the conclusion that because we do not have our own standards, it would fall under the state and federal standards.
Right.
I have reviewed those. I believe that they are sufficient.
You're a better man than I am.
We could make them more restrictive, but that we will not meet that timeline. I just want to make sure we're managing your expectations, but we will hold any project that comes before the board accountable to the state and the federal requirements. I can assure you of that. And we will make sure we're well-versed on what those are before the applicant comes before the board, if and when.
And if there's any concerns, we can condition them, and then any conditions would be brought into the performance standards.
And if any, if something is built and any issues arise after they're constructed, and if it's beyond my wheelhouse to address, I have all the contacts at the state level to get higher-ups in here to take a peek at things and get everything right. So.
And I guess I was wondering if this is a time when it's appropriate to get our town planner involved in helping get some of these things.
Well, rough drafts first. First steps first. Rough drafts, and then I will send them out to Hannah.
And then they go to the town planner.
They'll go to Hannah.
Okay.
And well, I'll send them to James first because he's my boss, my direct boss, so I'll send them to him to make sure he approves, and then we'll send them to Hannah to make sure that, A, she approves, B, she can add anything she feels is needed, and C, she can verify that there's no conflict that I've missed with any other ordinance, and then we can bring it before the board.
Okay.
It's a multi-step process to make sure we do it right.
Thanks for informing us.
Because the last thing I want to do is just throw something together and slam it in front of the board, and then a year from now be going, oh, this didn't work out good. So I'd rather make sure that we're fully protected on the front end and do it the right way, but we're working on it. I promise.
That's good.
Pat, just so I can answer, you know where I live.
Yes.
So I've done the same thing that Phil's done. I've reviewed the state standards. That's what I do for work too every day. So I'm going through them, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned that there might be some particular conditions, but you can put them on as conditions.
Yeah, and in the public hearing, we can hear your comments, and we can adjust it accordingly.
And as was brought up, I think, I don't know if you know anymore, but the state is doing a DOT survey of Route 4 as well.
Yes, they are. And I don't know if what I'm about to say is out of turn, so I apologize to my boss just in case, but I did get a call from the person who is proposing that gas station, and we talked, and I did let him know that there's a lot of concern about the traffic, and he is very keenly aware that there's potential traffic issues and plans to mitigate them. It's part of his planning process, and he's watching those DOT studies too. He's involved. So it's, I think it'll be okay with all of us working together to make this, like, safe is key, you know?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you working behind the scenes.
We try.
All right. So approval of minutes for March 16, 2023. I was absent that day, so we do not have a quorum to vote on that, so we will be skipping that, and that will move to the next meeting for, what is it, April 20?
April 20, but we did have one concern. I don't know.
Yeah, we spoke about it.
You spoke. And you'll send me that information?
I'll talk with James about that. Yep.
Okay.
And then moving on to old business, we'll just answer the questions about the Johnny Lane issues. As far as the formal review order, I will talk with James tomorrow and get that ball rolling unless Irish has something else to add to it.
Mr. Chair, I did get an email. I didn't bring the work phone in here, so I can't read it verbatim. They have been in touch with the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and they are planning a time to come out and do a deeper, more intensive study for the turtles and the snakes.
They being the town or they being the developer?
The developer.
Developer.
The developer, and I want to say it was Derek that emailed me, but I don't know offhand who it was, but somebody did email me.
The engineer that was here the last time did say that he was trying to get ahold of Derek York to see where to go next, and I have it in my notes from the last time and based on what you just said.
And I do have an email. If you guys need me to, I can run next door and grab my work phone and read you that email, but they have been in touch. They are, the project developers are working with DIWF, DIFW, with the acronym, people, to do the, to do the study on that. So I don't know that we need to request the review formally, but that's certainly something that we can talk to James about.
I'll talk with James and make sure that we get the ball rolling for that. If they don't, we will, and that way we can solve this issue.
Somebody will do it. We know it's official.
Yep.
I know that Mr. Raines had mentioned there was a meeting between, or an agreement between IFNW and Altus.
So since they aren't here, we can't really discuss that kind of stuff. I think even us just talking about this is kind of on the gray scale.
Stuck on the edge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're really down.
So we'll just answer these questions that we can, and then the ones that we don't, when they do show up, then we can, we can discuss these.
And I can also speak to the 250 feet around the edge of the pond. The ordinances are for the entire water, water area. It's not from like the center. It does, we take that into consideration.
I believe it's written 250 feet from the high watermark, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is determined, and that actually kind of speaks to the next, the next concern that I made note of here in regards to wetlands. So wetlands, and any sort of wetlands, any sort of, and Hannah can clarify this if I say it incorrectly, but any sort of water source, whether it be a stream, whether it be a wetland, whether it be a pond, they don't identify it by necessarily by water being there. A lot of times, particularly when you come to wetlands, they identify it based on the plant types that are growing within those areas. So what may look like a wetland may not be a wetland because it doesn't have the type of plant growth required to delineate it as that. And conversely, what doesn't look like a wetland, you may be surprised because it has certain things growing there that they're taking that into account. So there's a lot more involved than just water. It seems, you know, until you start learning about it, it seems like water would be the answer because wetland, stream, pond, but it's really soils and grass and that type of thing. I think I have pretty, pretty basic explanation, Hannah. Did I miss anything or screw anything up?
I think that's good to answer that at this point.
Okay.
Hannah, could you provide clarification just on the 250-foot high watermark? Because I got a quick education on that myself. It's not from, let's say it's a river. It's not from the bank of the river. It's from the highest or depth, point of deepest depth or the center, correct? Or am I wrong on that?
Great question. The wording is the high watermark of the stream. Exactly where that is, I don't know. I want to say it is edge, though.
I got it, opinion that it was from the center, but I would like clarification on that if we could get that. I think that lends itself to transparency and us doing our due diligence.
Yeah, I believe where it's measured from depends on the type of water body that it is. So I think some are measured from the center and some are measured from the high watermark, so I may be conflating the two, but we can definitely clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you guys want me to keep going, or do you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just looking to see if I could pull up the chapter 100, but as far as Rick's concern about people verifying third-party reports, I'd have to look into that one. But typically, you know, these people aren't going to sell themselves out because their reputation means more than anything else, because if they skew for one person, then they end up with a lawsuit or something. They're not typically going to have any business after that.
I shall say the third-party engineer reviewer was hired by the town, not by the consultant.
Okay. Thank you. That's even better.
Can I answer that question?
And then we had Pat, and her concerns were addressed before she had to leave.
Yep.
So I think we've tackled everything.
Well, there was a question about what modifications were done. I don't know if you missed that the last time, but he did list what they changed from our walkthrough at the last meeting as far as the pherohydrant connection, making the turnaround, putting the gate there.
Yeah, those will all be reflected on the new.
Right. But he was asking about what modifications. Those were all brought up and covered at the last meeting.
That will be, that will be presented when they are actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we can't, we can't explain to you their modifications. They have to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. That was it. Moving on, new business, sketch plan review, major subdivision, Worcester Road, R 3217E, R2 Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mike Sudak, Atar Engineering, here on behalf of Providential Liquidity Development. I have Pat Carroll here with me tonight. And yeah, quick overview, since this is the first time you guys have seen this. This is the first sheet in your plan set. I'm just going to briefly, briefly speak to the project. So this is a cluster residential development that we're proposing, parcels all the way in the northern end of the R2 Zone, 77 acres off Worcester Road. It's technically a dual frontage lot. We have a small bit of frontage off Pleasant Drive, Pleasant Drive, I got that right? But yeah, so what we're proposing, top of the page there, so the northeastern section of the property, about 20 acres of the overall 77, we're proposing to develop into a 14-lot subdivision of single-family residential dwellings, clustered lots. We're well-removed from municipal utilities at this point, so everything's going to be private wells, private septic systems. It's a simple road, about 1,400 feet in length, ending in a cul-de-sac. The remaining 57 and change acres is all going to be open space. And let's see, what else do I have? This is not in the plan sets you guys are looking at, but I was out there this morning, and I wanted to provide a little more clarity. So the highlighter line there, everything to the left of that, as you're looking at it, is all open field. So the tree line is this section of what we're proposing, and then the remainder of the lot is all wooded. So probably the first 800 feet of the proposed roadway is all just in open meadow, open farmland. There's an existing stone wall that's going to be running along the southern end of the proposed right-of-way, and we're going to try and preserve as much of that as possible. The southerly lots that come off that, we're going to need to, you know, make curb cuts, disturb a little bit of the stone wall, but we're going to be preserving as much of that as we can. Yeah, I really think that's it. Single-family dwellings, like I said, 2,000-plus square feet. There isn't a ton of relief on site. We could do basements if we have the relief for it, but the site is pretty gently sloping from east to west, but you guys will see that when we get to a sidewalk. So I think that's really all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Am I reading correctly, lots 1, 3, and 5, are those, are those wedded or wetland areas? Is that what that shaded area signifies?
Yeah, so the first, the first three on the south side of the road, the bottom, underneath the proposed travelway, yeah, that's meadowed wetland. So it's not forested or scrub shrub wetland, but it is hydric soil there. So the building envelope for those are a little bit tighter, and everything else is pretty dry. So.
My question is Lot A.
Yes.
Are they building that right now?
Yes.
Is that included on this subdivision?
It is a homestead exemption that has already been portioned off and is being developed.
Okay.
So it is not factored into any of the density calculations or any of the.
Okay. My concern was just, I've seen construction stuff working over there and had no clue what was going on, so at least, at least this is kind of clearing that up.
Yeah, so that, that one's under development, so the top-left lot, as you're looking at the page, and then soon, soon to be developed or already being developed, the opposite side of the proposed road is going to, what's effectively going to become Lot 1, should this development be approved. But right now, it's just a lot that's being developed on the remainder of the parcel.
Okay.
So if, if the subdivision should occur, it'll eventually become Lot 1. We have proposed this in such a way that we wouldn't be creating a non-conforming lot, but yeah, good question.
And the area that looks wedded between lots, is it 6 and 7, is that, is that flowing water or is that standing water?
So it's not flowing water. It does, it's a pretty deep channel, surprisingly. It's right along the tree line north of the proposed travelway, and it's probably a three- or four-foot deep, just grassed swale, effectively naturally. a three or four-foot deep, just grassed swale, effectively natural swale.
Is that a naturally occurring or, or was man-made burn?
I mean, I can't speak to whether, my, my guess, considering the rest of the pitch surrounding it, is that it was probably man-made, just at the edge of the field. It doesn't have water perpetually. I would assume, you know, heavier rain events, it's probably flowing pretty good, but yeah, well, you know, we'll have a culvert crossing through there. Probably pretty wide one because it is a pretty deep channel, but yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? No? Hannah, do you have anything to say? No?
No, none at this point.
Okay.
I'll just bring up for the record, just for transparency purposes, that A, yes, they do have the two properties going, the two buildings going, which are both legally permitted and they're doing their inspections. They're doing nice houses. B, while I was out there doing an inspection with Pat, I had stopped there. I'm sorry, this week has blurred together. I think it was yesterday I went over there. No, it might have been today. It was today I went over there and I had to stop at one of the butters. He had asked for a notarized form, so I was dropping that back off. And he did ask that if there was any plans for buffering in between the properties that are being built in his business. And I did, I did let Pat know that. I conveyed that directly and I wanted to make that a record.
Okay, that's a public hearing. Hopefully we can get some more.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted transparency that I did speak with Pat about something that Annabutter had brought up because I saw them two minutes apart, so.
All right, next is we should schedule a sitewalk. The 20th? Is that, is that gonna be good enough time-wise? Should be, right? Does that sound?
Yeah, that's 14 days from today, right? So.
So give you enough time to get out public notice, I guess. Is that cutting it too close?
I'm a little worried about the timeline on that. I mean, I can, I'm, I'm working tomorrow anyways. I can get some notices out. I just don't know because James is not working.
Let's give you the benefit of the time and kick it to the next, the next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, so it will be May.
I hate to do that, but it's just, I don't know that I can do it.
Time lines are timelines. Tell us what you can, what you can.
I don't know, I don't know that I can release the 20th with public notice.
We'll go for May 4th then.
May 4th.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah. What would you like us to, to stake out there?
Just, just stake out the, the road and just the lots, like the, just where the corners of the lots are.
Yeah, like the front sideline.
Yep.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah. What time? Like 5:00, 5:30? It's starting to get darker now.
It's light.
Light.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock sitewalk for everybody.
All right.
Hannah, we'll put you on Zoom and just drag you in my, my pocket. Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next is the second public comment for non-agenda items.
Hi, Carol Mullane, 47 Alley Pond Road. This is more just about Alley Pond itself.
Okay.
About a buffer being put around the pond. My house is 75 feet off of the pond. I brought Jen, when she was acting code enforcer, I brought her physically out to the property and said, this is where I want to build my house. Is this okay? And she's like, yep, it's a man-made pond. It's not on the land use map. The stream is, you're fine from the stream, but the pond is not on the land use map. So 75 feet is plenty. Now that there's endangered species, then I believe the 250-foot is warranted, not just recommended, but to be, it's a man-made pond and at what point is it established? I don't know, but it's, you guys have seen it. It's pretty established. So 250-foot buffer, I think.
But you're 75 feet?
I am, because at the time.
I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's known, you know?
I, I did my due diligence.
Yep.
The land was offered. I, I was away from where I needed to be, but, but now we know what's there. We didn't know what was there at the time, so now we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it's, I feel bad about.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Rains, 18 Carolyn Drive again. Just to speak a little bit more about the, the house at 47 Alley Pond. Yes, we followed the rules as they were in play at the time, so we ironically, and it's not lost on me, the irony of how close we are to the water.
Right.
What we have done, let me back up one step. When we looked at the property and purchased it and got a building permit, all by the book, we had no idea of the animal and wildlife that existed in the area.
Right, no studies were done before that.
Clearly, clearly. When we discovered Turtle Haven, as it, as it seems to be, we have gone ahead as a couple and decided to drastically change our landscaping plans so that we are less intrusive and less obstructive of turtles coming up to find a place to lay their eggs. We had planned on a ground patio. We are now going to elevate a deck so they can crawl under it. So we're trying to do our best to put our money where our mouth is and, and help the turtles, even though we clearly are the most invasive property to where these turtles are right now. And I just wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll close that public comment. Informational items? Do you have any?
Is this my deer-in-the-headlight look?
Yep.
Okay, well, as you all know, because I'm, I'm, because I'm sitting here, I no longer have an administrative assistant. We are doing some interviews next week, so good Lord willing and the crick don't rise, we will see a new face hopefully at the beginning of next month. Whoever we hire will need to give a notice, obviously. That having been said, I'm going to take this opportunity to ask you all's opinion if you would be comfortable with me continuing to be the primary person that comes to these meetings rather than the new hire, because I truly enjoy the opportunity to ask my questions and voice my opinions on the record. But if you prefer to have an impartial, you know, the administrative assistant here instead, that's fine, or with.
I think having you both here, and that's a great mentoring opportunity for you to help her cut her teeth into how we do business.
Yeah.
I personally think that's what.
He, her.
He, her, yeah.
Could be anyone.
Them.
It would be a great mentoring opportunity for them to see how we do business and how you do business and then reevaluate.
Yeah, I think as a speaking role, I'd rather have you as the speaker and then just kind of learning, because as a technician, they don't really have that authority to be speaking about things, unless something is needed to be said, but I mean, between you and our planners Hannah and Lee J, I think that most of it can be said through you guys.
Okay. I just, I'll be honest, I also think it kind of sweetens the pot for whoever we hire if they know that I will take the bulk of the meetings and they don't have to come all the time.
Well, I mean, technically, they're supposed, their role is more administration stuff, filing work and organizing it.
They're gonna listen to the meetings and transcribe the minutes and do all the emailing, email tags, but, so you guys are comfortable with me being the basically lead?
Yes.
You're okay with that too, Hannah?
I think you should bring us a coffee.
Yes, and I bring my coffee timer and I have been sipping slowly. But we, without saying too much, I did, I haven't had a chance to see Hannah email me back. The, the applications are starting to roll in, gentlemen, so busy season is upon us. Building, code enforcement, my end of things is super busy. Planning looks to be picking up and, yeah, not a whole, I, I don't know, my brain is fried. I've had too much coffee today. I don't think there was anything else. I really am working on land use ordinances. Something that does kind of pertain to the planning board that I think is going to really help the public. I am going to do some, oh, actually, I do have two things for you guys, but one of the things I'm going to start doing, because part of my role with the town is to do informational videos, which I've been unfortunately too busy to really do a whole lot of right now, but I want to do some on land use and kind of explain to people how, and it'll be good for me because I've asked Hannah and Lee J to send me whatever information, because I'm like a sponge and I want to learn all about the planning board stuff so I can best facilitate, but I want to start doing some videos about what our zones are, what requirements are, setbacks, what people can do in them, and do some about the planning board meetings, basically kind of what our procedures should be for every applicant that come through so the public knows and they know what we're doing and why we're doing it. So I think that would be very helpful because what I've seen here is a lot of questions that have come up for the various projects that I think could be easily understood by the public with a simple explanation of, these are the zones, these are the building requirements, and it can't hurt. So I'm going to do that. The other thing is, and this has become a, it's kind of becoming a bit of an issue, so I spoke, bless you, I spoke with Jody, Jody who's the head of transportation here and James, street signs. Street signs have been an issue and I guess they have not really been addressed with the developments. What we've done is we've created a new street sign request form and that way we can get something in writing. I think what we're leaning towards, and Hannah, I'd really like you to weigh in on this, what we're leaning towards is once the project's approved and the street names are chosen, we would like to have the applicants pay that directly to Jody's, to the transportation department, so that they can order the signs, get the signs up as soon as the roads are ready, but do that upfront, because that payment is separate and a lot of our developers are not understanding that in order to order the sign and have it put in, it's a $250 charge. They need to fill out this, you know.
So is the issue a lack of signage or just standardization? What, what is the issue at hand?
The issue at hand is that we have no, and I wasn't very clear on that at the beginning. I apologize.
That's okay.
Too much coffee. The issue at hand is that people are requesting street signs of me and we have not apparently had, I guess at one point before Jenny ended up going like split between the two towns, she had a process that she was following, but then when she went south for it completely and Joe came in, everything kind of got a little mishmashy, which it's.
It happens.
It happens. You've got people operating different ways and that, I guess, kind of got dropped and no real pickup there.
Procedure, yeah.
So we want to start implementing this procedure that this way keeps highway paid up on what they are doing. They can order the signs because sometimes the signs do take a while to come in and we don't want people waiting on street signs. It will also additionally, and this is huge for me and this is why, I mean, Hannah, if you don't want to do it this way, I completely get it, you're, you know way more, way, way more about this than me, but for me, E-911 is an issue and it's, it's been an issue that's been concerning to me since I started here. I, I know that people don't really care if their houses are numbered and in the E-911 system until they're moving in. I care about our contractors working on these houses because as much as life happens and people need emergency services when they're living in their homes, the risk is exponentially higher when you've got people swinging hammers and using power tools. So I would like to get the street signs, get the street names picked out as soon as possible, get the street signs up there and maybe able to do my E-911 sooner rather than later. Because I am your E-911 addressing officer in addition to your code officer and your deputy health officer and your planning board administrative assistant. I'm a little busy today, but I really feel it's, it's a priority of mine to be able to protect everybody, including the buildings as they're being built. So I'd like to be able to implement the street sign thing at the start. Once it's approved, you're going to have to do one of these for each one of your streets in your development. Jody and his guys will work on getting the signs. Irish will get out there as soon as you guys have a road made and get you some house numbers. Would you guys be amenable to including that in? And Hannah, is that something we can include in the process for approval? I don't know where that fits into your world.
Honestly, I'm not super, super familiar with it because kind of, as you said, it's one of those, they get approved and then public works takes care of it, but it sounds like a great idea to me. Are you the one who approves street names or is that?
Hold on, call me.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, I think it makes sense as a streamlining process to get things going and everything. I don't know of any formal process in order to kind of enforce, you know, that being what we do when things are approved. It sounds like a great idea.
So if I can figure out how we make that like a formal part of the process, you're on board?
Yep.
On board, on board.
So I know we've talked about it before and I think there'd be a lot of value because there's, there's so many moving parts when, when these projects come before us and us being all volunteers and you being administratively overwhelmed with your current duties, I, I think there'd be a lot of value in us. We don't have to do it, you know, at a, at a meeting per se. We can do this virtually and embrace technology, but let's come up with a checklist for an applicant. I know we have a checklist, but let's dust that off and, and add these things to it. That way we're not missing anything. You know, we, we can spitball that on the interwebs via email and, and come up with a checklist that works for us. And that way, every time a new applicant comes before us, one, we're holding them all to the same standard, and two, we're not missing incredibly obvious things like street signage. And I just think it's going to make your job easier and it's going to make our job easier. Hey, is the checklist done? Good to go. And I, I don't think that would require a lot of administrative effort on, or coordination on our part.
No, we could even just add that to new business one day and just make it part of the meeting, so that way it's more formal and then we can kind of deal with it as it comes.
Okay. I do have some checklists that I don't know, Hannah, if they came from SMPDC. They were in one of our shared drives as I was going through and they've, there's their checklist for conditional use site plans for major subdivision, minor subdivision. I almost think there was four, so I think I'm missing one.
Well, let's dust them off and make them our own.
Yep.
Okay. Hannah, do you want to be included on those emails, James?
Definitely. Especially if the originals may have come from us.
I know they came, that's like the story of my life. I don't know where anything comes from.
SMPDC has been working with Burwick for quite some time now.
Yeah, well, James, James is very creative with his documents too, so it might be something that he took from them or took one he was a planner or Tammy or, I don't know, I see about 50 names I don't recognize, but I'm, I very much like that idea. Thank you, Phil. Because it might be a little more administrative work on the upfront end, but if it makes everything run smoother.
It can streamline and it holds everybody to the same standard. We're not shooting from the hip, you know?
Yeah.
Not that we shoot from the hip, but it definitely makes our job easier.
It's, it's not shooting from the hip, it's making sure that there are things better.
It's crisis management.
Yeah, and well, making sure that we're not forgetting things is very important. So, thank you, guys. That's all I can come out of my little brain today. I don't think I have anything else.
May I just ask a scheduling question?
A scheduling question?
As a.
Oh, you confused me.
We, you can speak with me after and we can work on that.
Okay.
If there are no further items for consideration this evening from the esteemed Burgess Room in the depths of the Burwick Town Hall, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good evening.